Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everybody to tonight's October 1st, 2024 City Council meeting. Would ask that you please silence all electronic devices. This time we'll call on Councilmember Bob Ward for tonight's invocation.
Let us pray. As we begin this evening, we pray for and ask that your healing and comfort in hand be with all of those affected by the catastrophic and devastating impact of Hurricane Helene. We now pray for your presence and guidance as we proceed tonight to fulfill our responsibilities to our citizens and community. As we see campaign signs along our streets and roadways, we are reminded and remain especially thankful for the many freedoms of our democracy. We are particularly grateful for living in a democracy where we as citizens participate in our own governance. We are grateful for our city employees and for their dedication and their service to the city. We seek your blessings on the task before us. May our deliberations be with an open mind and our decisions be fair, reasonable, and according to your will. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Bob. Our next item on the agenda is a proclamation. This is National Fire Prevention Week coming up October 6th through the 12th of 2024. At this time, I'd like to recognize our chief, Fire Chief Matt Lawrence, to come forward and we're going to read the proclamation. Chief, good evening.
Good evening. How are you all?
Good. You want to go ahead and give us a little?
Yeah, if you don't mind. So we come to you each year about this time with the ask to help us make Fire Prevention Week, and Fire Prevention Month, actually, in our case, special in the city of Burlington and serve as a focus for our community to ensure that they are safe and they make their homes safe to help us prevent fires in their homes. So we come to you tonight just to announce that next week, October 6th through 12th, is National Fire Prevention Week. I've got some of our staff with us tonight. I'll just make some quick introductions. Start with our community risk reduction folks who mainly make Fire Prevention Week happen for us, but our Assistant Chief of Community Risk Reduction, M. Harris, our Public Fire Life Safety Educator, Captain David Sharp, our Assistant Chief of Support Services, Paul Wallington, and our Assistant Chief of Emergency Response, Greg Britt. So the National Fire Prevention theme for this month, for October this year is "Smoke Alarms Make Them Work For You." So to help us do that, we have during the month of October, a very busy schedule. Our entire staff will be focused on, among other things, helping our community become more fire safe. So we've got more than 35 calendared events within the month of October when we will have school tours at the fire stations. We're going out into the community. And one that I want to highlight with you is an open house that we will have this Sunday as kickoff to National Fire Prevention Week. So that will be at our headquarters fire station from 11:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. Something special about this open house is it is, we will be celebrating the 100th birthday of our second fire truck, motorized fire truck in the city owned Maude. I'm sure you've heard of Maude. It's a 1924 model American Le France that we still have possession of and are proud of, that we will have at headquarters for folks to enjoy and see that. And we'll celebrate the 100th birthday of Maude on that day as well. But we'll also have activities for the kids, our Junior Firefighter Challenge, fire station tours, all kinds of activities for the kids to take care, to teach them fire safety, to engage with our community. So I just want to highlight those things and ask that you help us focus on fire safety during the month of October.
Well, we appreciate you guys and what you do. And it's always, this time of year's always very important, and the work you do is very important. And inevitably, somebody from the community always reaches out and tells us how much they appreciate it. So that's, we know you have an impact, and 35 events in the month is a bunch. And that coupled with the fact that you guys are helping out and doing assistance in western North Carolina as well. So it's just a blessing to have such good representation out in the community. And we love and appreciate all of you, and thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
I do want to read the proclamation this evening. The City of Burlington, North Carolina Proclamation and Recognition of Fire Prevention Week, October 6th through the 12th, 2024. Whereas the City of Burlington is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our community, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the location where people are at greatest risk from fire, and whereas smoke alarms sense smoke well before you can, alerting you to danger in the event of fire, in which you may have little time to escape safely, and whereas Burlington residents should be sure everyone in the home understands the sounds of smoke alarms and knows how to respond, and whereas Burlington residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire, and whereas the City of Burlington Fire Department is dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection and education, and whereas the 2024 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Smoke Alarms Make Them Work For You," effectively serves to remind the City of Burlington the importance of having working smoke alarms throughout our homes. Therefore, I, Jim Butler, Mayor of the City of Burlington and the Burlington City Council, do hereby proclaim October 6th through 12th, 2024, as Fire Prevention Week throughout this city. And I urge all the people of Burlington to test their home smoke alarms and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Burlington's Fire Department this is the first day of October 2024. So thank you, gentlemen. Paul, we got your back. Don't worry about it, okay? There's two sides to smoke detectors. One is being sure they're installed, and two is being sure you know how to replace the batteries without setting them off.
Yes.
Which has happened in my house before.
Mine, too.
So thank you, gentlemen. Next on the agenda is Code of Ethics disclosing any conflicts of interest. At this time, we'll recognize City Clerk Beverly Smith.
The District Council, it's my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest. I ask if there are any potential conflicts concerning tonight's agenda items.
None. Our next item is a request for additions to the consent agenda. These were discussed yesterday evening at our work session. Item H, McAdam's Company Link Transit Consultant Services Agreement. Item I, a resolution to set a date of public hearing for 1666 and 1736 Whites' Kennel Road voluntary non-contiguous annexation. And Item J, adoption of traffic ordinance. At this time, we will entertain a motion on the additions to the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those items are approved. At this time, we will entertain a motion for the adoption of the agenda with the additions.
So moved.
We have a motion to adopt the agenda with additions. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Our next item is the consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions on these items, please let us know. Item A, to adopt a resolution authorizing the donation of surplus equipment from Burlington Animal Services to Person County, North Carolina pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 160A-280 and 160A-274A. B, to adopt a resolution for Burlington Fire Department to participate in a live burn fire training and to close a portion of Morgantown Road pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 160A-296A4 during the exercise. C, to approve a temporary street closure in downtown Burlington for the Burlington Recreation and Parks 77th Annual Christmas Parade Special Event on Saturday, November 23rd, 2024, beginning at 6:00 a.m. until 12:00 noon at the following locations. Lexington Avenue from East Webb to Maple, Spring Street from East Webb Avenue to Maple Avenue, Worth Street from Front Street to Davis, Main Street from Front Street to Morehead Street, Front Street from Worth Street to Lexington Avenue, Davis Street from Worth Street to Broad Street, and Maple Avenue from Main Street to Spring Street, in addition to City Parking Lot Number One. Item D, to approve a temporary street closure in downtown Burlington for the Burlington Recreation and Parks Department to host the Holiday Magic Special Event on Saturday, December 14th, 2024, during the specified times at the following locations. The street closures will be from 1:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., Main Street from Davis to Front, Spring Street from Davis to Webb Avenue, closure at Lot 1 access as well, Front Street from Worth Street to Lexington Avenue, closure at Lot 2 access. The street closures from 3:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m., Davis Street to Spring Street to Lexington Avenue, Lexington Avenue from Davis Street to Webb Avenue, and a closure at Lot 1 access. Item E, to approve Budget Amendment 2025-15 for the Burlington Fire Department to allocate funds donated in memory of Amy Lynn Cato for use for the Fire Department Fire Prevention Kids Program. Item F, to approve Budget Amendment 2025-16 for the Planning Department to allocate funds received from HUD in the Community Development Block Grant or CDBG program income. Item G, to approve Budget Amendment 2025-17 for the Economic Development Department to accept and allocate funds received from the North Carolina Department of Commerce Rural Downtown Economic Development Grant or RDED. Item H, to approve an agreement between the City of Burlington and McAdam's Company upon concurrence from the City Attorney and Chief Financial Officer to provide engineering and design consulting services for linked transit passenger amenities. Item I, to adopt a resolution to set a date of public hearing for October 15th, 2024, to consider the 1666 and 1736 Whites' Kennel Road voluntary non-contiguous annexation. Item J, to adopt an ordinance approving the following Traffic Commission recommendations. One, install no parking between, no parking between signs on the west side of South Kearney Street, starting 20 feet south of the intersection of South Kearney Street at South Church Street or US 70, and terminating at 208 South Church Street's northern property boundary. Number two is to install a no parking sign between the east side of South Kearney Street, starting 20 feet south of the intersection of South Kearney Street at South Church Street or US 70 intersection, and terminating at 203 South Kearney Street's northern property boundary. At this time, we will entertain a motion on the proposed consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second? We have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda items are approved. Moving into public hearings, we have one public hearing tonight. Item one, a public hearing has been scheduled for the City Council to consider a text amendment to our Unified Development Ordinance, UDOTA 1-24. At this time, we'll recognize Jamie Lawson, our Executive Director of Planning and Development Services, as well as Chad Meadows with Code Right Planners. Chad's...
I will do the presentation tonight.
Chad, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. How are you today?
Good evening. All good.
Very good. Thank you so much for having me. I am Chad Meadows with Code Right. I'd like to share my screen. Can you guys see the presentation on your screens?
Yes. Yes.
Very good, very good. We're here today to discuss UDOTA 124, a series of amendments related to water supply watershed protection. This is the 14th set of amendments that we've made to the UDO since its adoption back in July of 2019, and I have just a few slides for your consideration on this material. UDOTA 124 is focused on updating the water supply watershed district provisions. These changes are based solely on the state's model ordinance for such areas, and the changes that are before you tonight are simply to bring the city's rules, the UDO, into compliance with state requirements. So we've got a handful of adjustments to various procedures, including the expedited subdivision, preliminary subdivision plat processes. We've got some additional enforcement provisions with respect to water supply watershed protection. There are a handful of adjustments to applicability exemptions, and some clarity on the range of allowable uses that are permitted within a water supply watershed area. Lake McIntosh area is the, is the location in Burlington where these regulations apply. Finally, there are some additional provisions that have been added based on state rules that impact the maximum number of dwelling units per acre, the max, the minimum lot area, and the maximum built upon area that are permitted. So generally speaking, these regulations create additional flexibility for the City of Burlington while at the same time protecting water quality in the Lake McIntosh area. And as I mentioned before, these stand, these changes are proposed simply to bring the city's rules into compliance with state law. Planning Ward heard this matter on the 26th of August. There was a unanimous approval, and we had a discussion about this material at City Council's work session on the 16th of September. That is it for my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys may have.
Okay. Thank you, Chad. Jamie, anything you need additional to that? Any, any questions from council? We've all been through it pretty, pretty well. This is a public hearing, so at this time, we will open the floor for any public comments, which I don't, other than staff, might be hard. So Tony, you got anything?
No, sir.
I was checking. Anybody on this side would like to have any comments? Counsel, seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is closed. At this time, we will entertain a motion on the request, as spelled out on your pink sheets.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the request to amend the City of Burlington Unified Development Ordinance with the proposed text amendment. The motion is based upon the consistency of the proposed text amendment with the comprehensive plan in that. Section 4, Land Use Goal 1, Recommendation 5 of the Comprehensive Plan, calls for an update of the Unified Development Ordinance. Section 4, Land Use Goal 1, Recommendation of the Comprehensive Plan, calls for ensuring sound land planning decisions that are consistent with the vision of the plan. The action is reasonable in the public interest in that. Section 4, Land Use Goal 2, Recommendation of the Comprehensive Plan, addresses confusion, conflicts, and zoning code through the Unified Development Ordinance. In Section 4, Land Use Goal 2, Recommendation for the Comprehensive Plan, a new UDO would be a modern, graphically intensive and user-friendly, both from the public and the petitioner and administrative perspective.
Thank you. We have a motion for the approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Chad. Appreciate your efforts with that. And thank you, Jamie.
Thank you very much. Y'all have a great evening.
You, too.
See ya. Thank you.
At this time, we'll move into public comments. I believe there are no public comments. Any council comments this evening?
I have a couple. One is, I think, I, I know we've had the invocation, but I think a special prayer is needed for the families of Malik Mevin, the young football player at Cummings that died of a heart attack. Also Mason Jenkins, the seven-year-old that was shot and died from the shots. Bill Davis, former employee of the City of Burlington, also the father of our own Beverly Smith. So love and touch these families with, from the good Lord. So thank you. One other thing, during this situation with making, Mason Jenkins, I had a parent, who is a parent of ours at school, but also very close to this family, asked me the question, "What does Burlington have for our youth?" Great question, I thought, and I stumbled around and tried to answer it, but I think it would be very important for, for our families and our community to know what's available for our youth. What can we do to help our youth get off the streets and do something? I don't know what it is. I know we have a lot of different activities with the Recreation Department, but I think somewhere along the line, we need to put together something. If it's a reference sheet for parents to be able to go to and say, "I have a seven-year-old child, and I would like for them to be involved in whatever it is." I know Tony's been around a long time, and he knows a lot of different things about this city, but I think it's something that we put together and advertise, to be honest with you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, we had, we worked with Impact Aliments, and we had a Youth Solutions Director there with Impact Aliments that was funded by the city at one point, in the not-so-distant future. And we had compiled exactly that as we were trying to get other activities and programming out in the community. So probably a good idea to resurrect that and, and just be sure that all of that information is readily available. We've, we've done a great job at, at keeping the public informed on the many things that we have going on, but none more important than keeping our young people busy and active, doing the right things.
So thank you for that.
Great, great recommendation, and I think that would be a good starting point if we could maybe...
And also, Mr. Mayor, also a big salute to Chief Baylog and the police for working tirelessly for trying to bring closure to this. And hats off to the entire Burlington Police Department, as well as our employees and Fire Department as well. So thank you for what you did.
You know, one thing that came out of the situation with the young man that, that, you know, back is the challenge in what we're trying to do is, there always seem to be significant incidents that occur in parts of our community where, you know, that maybe the, the culture, or at least let's say, support group for these young people are not nearly as strong as, as they should be. And that's, you know, something that's not just here, it's everywhere, to be quite honest with you. Story Tony will appreciate. Years ago, we had youth football, and there was a team made up of, one of our coaches used to run a little restaurant or bar named Broad Street Lunch. And he would go pick those kids up. These are kids, most of them were kids of minority kids or kids of low income. He would go pick them up in his pickup truck. He would take them to every game. And somehow, he figured out a way to work with Burger King at one time, to get them hamburgers after the game. To this day, some of those kids who now, geez, probably 50, 60 years old, still appreciates what he did for them. Now, I'm not saying that what has, what has to be done across the board, but that opportunity to provide some guidance or some help to some of these kids that they may not have from their families is something that also is a result of why the Burlington Youth Center was built, to be quite honest with you. And it just keeps going around and around and around. And unfortunately, I think it's a, you know, it's amazing, I think, how some of these kids can come through some of the challenges they have in the, where they live, and who's around them, and be able to be successful later on in life. That's, that's a lot easier said than done.
And that was sort of what Conell and Rhonda Graham deal with their calves. I mean, that's been going on for many, many years. And I saw Rhonda over at the balloon, and she said they had 90 kids involved right now, and 20 coaches, I think she said, involved. And that's been going on at least 30 some years now, 35.
And they, some really good young people have come out of that program.
Yep.
And some really good athletes came out of the program, too.
Absolutely.
But, you know, there's no easy answer, but I, I think we got to realize that this issue is not going to go away.
It's not.
It's not. I mean, I hate to say it, but I think we're kidding ourselves.
It's not, and there's, it's not one dimensional. It's not a one-dimensional problem. It's multi, it comes at us from multi angles. And, you know, if you just think about, we recently went through boards and commission appointments, and we were having the conversation as a council about the lack of interest in serving on some of these boards and commissions. And that's kind of an extenuum into some of the community events and some of the things that we do, because people are busier now. Their lives are much different than they were 20 years ago.
Right.
So we have to think differently. The judicial system is a piece of this. What we do with community policing and law enforcement is extremely important, and, and how we're out and about, but it's going to truly take a community to solve a problem like this. This council can't solve it. Law enforcement is not going to be able to solve it. But together, we can do anything. If, if we all work together on it and start utilizing our resources, then a, a bigger problem becomes a little easier to manage if we can lean in and leverage the support of groups just like Eric Cass and others. So I would encourage everyone, from, from city staff, those that live local, to those out in the community, to just get involved in the community and extend a helping hand. Tragic events are, always put a spotlight on things, and then you, you, out of, out of those adversities, you find a way to improve things. And, you know, we're experiencing that in western North Carolina right now. Communities are coming together, helping one another, and tragic events have a way of spotlighting that so that you're moved to get involved. And I hope we all stay moved with this, one particular thing. As an extension of that, I would like to thank Chief Baylog. We, we were able to, the timing was such that the mayor's radio show was last Tuesday, and we dedicated the whole show to informing the community as to the series of events and, and kind of how PD had operated during that period, kind of to the extent that we could. But it was obvious it was very important for those that called in and for some of the conversations. And I want to thank folks at the radio station for allowing us to do that. We actually went over about 15 minutes, probably. So Chief, thank you for doing that. And to all of our first responders, being really the heartbeat of, of what city staff is out in the community, it's really important. So thank all of y'all for that. Any other comments?
The one thing I will add is that, from a community perspective, the main question that I was asked, as Captain Person, excuse me, when Mason was murdered, was, where are the substations? Can you guys give me an update on what happened to the substations that were at Lowmont, Tupper Street? Were they actually city funded? Who was, who was heading that program?
That would have been under...
The government.
The substations had always historically been... might need that would further enhance our ability to layer that in.
People we support. But that's the main thing is that a lot of people are asking, having those programs in place, you know, enrichment, because they were more than just substations, right? They became, they were like learning labs for the kids that lived in the neighborhood. So, when you talk about those latchkey children, what are they doing with? How are we keeping them occupied after school? They were able to go to those resource centers and get, have protection, but also support and homework and things like that.
Well, that challenge is going to be there because there's so many single-parent families now, which is, and that's, that's a challenge for anyone. That person, knowing that parent, quite honestly, is normally the mother, the mother's time to work, make a living, and then trying to take care of the kid. It's, that's a, that's a real challenge, and it's, there was something called back in, gosh, I remember in, around two thousand, about a latchkey kid, that kid that would go home, or he stole that, till I was there. And Ronnie went through it.
I went through it.
It's a, it's a real, it's, it's an interesting situation to, to, to see, but the young man that, you know, the situation he had over at the apartment, just to be honest, and I don't mean to preach about this, but a child gets killed, and then there's people saying different things about who may have done it. It's pretty sad. What are you dealing with in the bigger picture here?
To share responsibility, that was definitely the message, that, you know, as Councilperson, I am really heavy on, we all have a responsibility. Yes, the police have their responsibility. We live in our community. These are our children. We all, we have that same responsibility to work with our community and our law enforcement to ensure that our neighborhood is safe. So, shared responsibility is the, I, I definitely agree with that.
It's just, it's a, it's a real challenge. Any other council comments? Thank everyone for your comments and thoughts and prayers with those three families. If there's nothing else, at this time, we'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are...